Good afternoon, and welcome to the informational meeting Tuesday, September 20, 2022. Before we get started, I'd like to remind the council, we do have a packed agenda, and the opportunity to follow up with some questions is available with the people that are going to speak. We do have an executive session scheduled, so we'd like to see if we can get the public input by a little after five, if possible, to get to executive session. So, thank you for your consideration. We'll move right into committee reports. CCOG, I was able to attend the meeting last week, so I'll run with that. We approved the budget for the upcoming year preliminary budget. We looked at the numbers going forward, a slight increase with the cost of construction and everything. But otherwise, the CCOG and the moving of houses and the loans that are coming in and out, it's all really good. There's been some new faces there, and that has really helped out our transition. So, CCOG is going good. If you have any further questions, I would ask you to direct them to Lynn Keller Forbes, who will give you a long and detailed explanation of everything going on there. How about the UDC? Several council members are on that board.
Mr. Chair.
Greg Neitzler, please.
Thank you. There's really two items, I guess, that were of note. The first was, there was a review of the City of Sioux Falls Transit Development Plan that was presented by Sam Trabillcock. That's going to be coming to the council for a presentation very soon. We've talked about that and wanting to see that in relation to potentially appropriating money for the new plan and the money that it would require to implement that plan. So, we look forward to that at the council. The other one is, we joined in a letter of support for South Dakota DOT Opposition Letter that they are providing to the federal government as part of the federal government's rulemaking process. It's opposition to greenhouse gas performance measures. Essentially, there are some proposed rules, I believe, out of the EPA that would establish some rules as it relates to greenhouse gas measurements and emissions in each state. And the state and the city are obviously not opposed to wanting to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but the issues that we had were a couple, which was, it would take away a lot of local control, and it would be kind of a one-size-fits-all solution, something that really doesn't take into account the rural aspect of the state. And then the other thing was, it would establish a baseline where they were going to start the baseline, really as we were coming out of COVID, which the state felt was not a good baseline and would be very hard to keep it at that level, and that it was just an inappropriate baseline to start with. So, we agreed with that and authorized the signing of that letter of support along with the DOT, so they can, and they will be sending that letter to the federal government during the rulemaking process. So, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the reports. Now, we go move on to council remarks. Opportunity for a council to make some remarks, if they're appropriate. Not seeing none. We'll move right on to our first presentation, which is very timely today. Public Safety Update, Chief John Toome.
Chief John Toome, Sioux Falls Police Department. Thanks, council, again. This is our biannual meeting now, where we come together, present some crime stats to you, and also, if you may have tuned in yesterday for our press briefing that we held with the mayor, the sheriff, Milstead, and State's Attorney Daniel Hagar. But we will get into the numbers. Again, looking at our, these are our per capita property crime and violent crime rates. Again, we look for spikes or any major deviations. This doesn't include 22 numbers, as obviously 22 is not complete, but this is through 21, and we kind of see where those numbers are trending. I would anticipate 2022's per capita numbers to be closer to 2020's as we kind of look at how the numbers compare, and that's why I'll include a lot of 2020 numbers in the statistical analysis going forward. Looking at our population, again, well documented, the growth of Sioux Falls has been steady, seeing a little bit bigger growth between last year with adding more residents than previously forecasted, and again, we'll see where that growth continues to lead us. Clearance rates. Haven't always included this slide in the past, but I think it's important to note. You look at our different clearance rates for the past three years from 2018 through 2021, as well as the national average on the far right. And as you'll see, our police department has far exceeded national averages when it comes to clearance rates. This has become a recent topic of conversation amongst the public, especially with the homicide and the two unsolved homicides that we're working on right now. But know that we work diligently and put our full effort into resolving these cases and really clear them far and above the national average, and just wanted to point that slide out for us. But again, as I mentioned in the press briefing, real life is not CSI. Sometimes investigations take hard work and a long time and more than an hour to solve, and we will continue to work on those as we move forward, obviously, of high importance. Looking at calls for service, we're starting to see a little bit of an interesting phenomenon as the population has gone up from year to year. We are seeing a little bit where the calls for service growth is not necessarily growing in line with population. It's an interesting stat. It's an interesting number. Calls for service are very subjective. It's everything from homicide or a bank robbery to a dog that's barking at 2:00 in the morning, right? So, there's different ways to measure it as far as how the people are engaged in what they're reporting. But again, just a good stat of note, we are busy, though, as you'll see from the upcoming stats, the amount of calls we're working on that involve a little bit more investigation and time and effort are increasing. This one is our online reports. We've, you've heard us communicate and message throughout the past couple of years. We'd like to see more people use that online reporting option. It's a way for us to triage calls. It's also for some of these call types where there's no victim present, or sorry, no suspect present, no evidence on scene, sometimes just a report is needed, so we've been offering these through Metro Communications. We're seeing more utilization of our online reports. It's not a mandatory thing that we, but a service we provide, sometimes it's a little more efficient for people. Like to point it out, it just shows an engaged public that's willing to report even the smallest crime with no leads. We want to know about it, we want to hear about it, we want to make a report on it and make sure we at least document it, as it sometimes becomes valuable down the road. Homicides. Again, these stats are through August for the past three years. Eight through August in 2022 and 2021, three through 2022. We will add two more in September, which will put us at five. Putting the numbers in context a little bit, just to see where we've been at the past couple of years, obviously, we strive, we would like to see no homicides. That's naive for us to think that would happen, but it's important for us to take note of these stats and see where they're trending and see where they're at, and say traditionally, it's kind of where we've always kind of been in that range, and we'll obviously keep an eye on this moving forward, but that's a high-profile one that usually comes out. Assaults. Kind of covered this last year when we did crime update. 2021, while the rest of the country was seeing an uptick in violent crime, it carried on from 2020, we saw kind of a statistical aberration where it kind of went down a little bit. Well, 2022 has kind of returned us back to those 2020 levels a little bit, where we're seeing some of these crimes trend back up, and you could see by this graph. And this became very early, kind of within the first four, five months of the year, we started looking at the numbers, how they were comparing, and they're always trending just a little bit higher than 2021, more like 2020. And again, this has received a lot of scrutiny, and we've talked about it quite a bit, wanting to engage the public and talk about what we're seeing and what we're experiencing as a community and different, you know, ways we can look at addressing it. Our rape numbers are down substantially. Again, a lot of different things to attribute to this, but just a positive statistic to see those trending down. Robberies have gone up. Again, we noticed this very early in the year as well, so started looking for trends, and what we saw was maybe prevalent. A lot of times in the past, Sioux Falls has experienced a rash of casino robberies or a rash of gas station robberies. That's not really what's driving these situations. Most recently, we had a pretty high-profile bank robbery, but a lot of the robberies that we're seeing are robberies from person to person regarding, not necessarily weapons, but just use of force. Again, a robbery is not a burglary. Sometimes they get misconstrued as to what's what. It's the taking with either the threat, threatening of violence, or sometimes the use of a weapon. And again, this has come evidence, we were going through stats one day, and there was a phone taken from somebody outside the library, or somebody took a bottle of liquor from somebody, or everything for something a little more involved, which would be a gas station or a casino robbery. So, there's a lot of variation within those stats, and we've kind of been monitoring this throughout the year to see what trends we could identify and know that it's kind of a broad spectrum that we're seeing within this crime category. And then burglaries, we saw an uptick in 2021. That was one of the few areas we saw an uptick, and now we're seeing those at about the same level. And again, these are a variety of different call types, a variety of different things. One thing that will be interesting to study by the end of the year is a lot of the well-documented issues with inflation and economy, if that's going to see a end-of-the-year difference on some of our property crime statistics and what we see there. So, we'll keep an eye on those trends. Stolen vehicles, well, despite our best messaging, we're still going up. And again, get the reports every day. A lot of it is keys left in unlocked vehicles or providing vehicles. We'll keep messaging the community, we'll keep talking about it. Again, people are tired of us probably talking about that and the guns that are left inside, but apparently, we're not catching on, so we'll keep that messaging and keep that going out there. I think Sam Clemens, people are tired of him, but we're going to make it even more tired of him, because we're going to have him keep saying it in a press briefing. Larcenies, again, this is another trend that was interesting. When we're not necessarily looking at, larcenies are a lot of times shopliftings or thefts from different places, and this number also has gone up. By the end of the year, we want to really study the effects that the inflation, the economy maybe is having on some of these property crime numbers, because we've also seen a rise in fraud and embezzlement as well. Our property crimes detectives have seen a substantial increase in their caseload this year, like never before, and there's a lot of hard work that has to be done in looking at these different cases, and many of them are very difficult to solve. And so, another trend that we're keeping a close eye on. And again, vandalism's up as well. Fentanyl seizures, high-profile. We're not going to get into some of the politics of it, but just look at the numbers and the facts of it. We had record amounts of seizures last year. It is a very present and relevant drug in our community. It's the M30 pill. There's not a lot of other ways that people are consuming or using that drug right now. Some of the things we need to really talk about are, if you're buying drugs from a drug dealer, it's a safe assumption that's not a pharmaceutical-grade drug. You should be expecting that it's full of stuff that's bad for you and could kill you. Our fentanyl seizures are up from, obviously, last year we had just some pretty substantial seizures, but we also had a record amount of deaths as well. So, sometimes the equation is, okay, if the cops can seize more drugs, then more people will be safe. The reality is, is that the demand is still there, and the demand is still high, and when the demand prevails, the supply will as well. That's the history of the drug trade and how we have to look at preventative activity and preventative measures when it comes to that. And again, meth is well documented. With our overdoses, we had just as many, I think, just as many meth overdoses last year as fentanyl overdoses. Our overdose deaths this year are down a little bit from last year, so my hope is that that's our messaging to the community, our messaging in particular to young people about the dangers of this drug, and we will continue, along with other partners within the community, to make sure we're pointing out the obvious dangers of these drugs. Conclusion, again, we could get deep into the numbers, but we covered a lot of things yesterday in that press brief, if you happened to talk in, and some of the challenges we're facing with a lot of repeat offenders, a lot of parole probation issues. We're having great conversations with the state, with the DOC, as well as our partners in Pennington Rapid County, or Pennington County and Rapid City, who are experiencing similar type issues. And again, we can continue to dialogue and talk about some strategies moving forward. Again, be happy to take any questions you have at this time. Move quickly, I know there's a tight agenda, so I want to make sure I give time for questions for you.
It's tight, but this is a very important subject. So, councilors, questions? Counselor Sober.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, chief, for being here today. Remind me again, would all crimes fall under larceny?
Larceny's shoplifting, taking of a yard decoration. Basically, a burglary is when you break into an unoccupied structure, occupied structure, takes something out. The larceny can be a variety, really a catch-all for all other crimes that involve taking something, so, and not by force. So, if I guess that if I, if I take a wallet out of your car that's unsecured, or if I take something off your porch, or shoplift from a store, or it's a variety of different crime, a variety of different ways you can commit a larceny.
Okay, so while that's up, what, 500 or somewhere in there?
Yeah.
That's...
Substantial.
Okay. Is it, would you call it alarming, or no, or is it just so many?
Well, it's a little bit of difficulty to it. Taking things less than $400 becomes a class-two misdemeanor, right? It's a very low-level crime. It's a very low-level offense, right? So, as soon as we see these spike, depending on what's there, again, we look at economic factors sometimes and see how those are interrelated to property crimes. I'm not saying that's what we're seeing for sure, but again, if you look at some of the trends within property crimes or things that involve money, whether it's embezzlement or fraud or other things, we are seeing a rise in all those levels that we haven't seen in years previous. So, we have to analyze that and see really where the majority of those cases are coming from and what inroads we can make on those.
And in robbery, you were talking about, you know, what you might call a minor, you know, somebody takes a phone from somebody or a bottle of liquor, and that, is that all minor and major ones are falling in that 115 number?
Yeah, they all fall into the robbery category. Again, it's any, there's a broad spectrum of definition of what falls under robbery. It's not always, you know, the stick-'em-up-type moment that I think people think of, whether either a gas station or a casino, there's force or the threat of force to take something occurs in a lot of different ways. And that's why we wanted to, and this is back in April, March, we were really seeing those numbers go up, we're really getting into, okay, what is the trend we're seeing that we can deal with? If it's a casino robbery trend or a gas station robbery trend, there's usually some pretty unifying factors we can look at, or a group or a crew of people that are trying to do that. We're seeing just kind of a more widespread robbery issue that's not necessarily the use of a gun to rob a gas station, or what somebody might think.
And finally, of all the categories, I mean, is there one that's most concerning to you of everything of all these different ones you're given today? Is there one that sticks out?
Well, it's going to, it's going to come back to aggravated assaults from what we're seeing. And again, I pulled numbers from August aggravated assaults, we had about 60, and covered this in the press brief yesterday, too. Of the 60, the people who are perpetrating the majority of these crimes have at least some involvement with the criminal justice system before. They've been involved in a variety of ways, and of those, there was 18 that didn't have a suspect defined. The majority of those 18, the victim was not cooperating with our investigation, right? So, it's very difficult when we look at some of these numbers. You can look at them at a broad spence or look at a little sense. A lot of times, a lot of these aggravated assaults are, again, people who are involved in criminal activity with each other, people who know each other, or people who are involved romantically in some way, shape, or form. It's a domestic and usually a criminal tie there doing a lot of these aggravated assaults. And again, the lack of victim cooperation, especially after someone's been shot or stabbed, is quite disheartening. The street code sometimes is more important than anything else, right, about not snitching or not saying anything of that regard. So, it's something we have to just talk to our young people about, because ultimately, these people will perpetrate other crimes that produce more victims. That's a community-wide approach where we together say, you know what, we have to take care of those issues.
Thank you. Other questions, councilors? Counselor Cole.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Toome. As someone whose neighborhood was recently hit by someone trying to, you know, go in door-to-door, the Facebook page, they're putting videos of people trying to break in. What would you recommend besides locking doors and keeping valuables away that neighborhoods do to help deter crime?
That's a great question. So, the neighborhood watch influence has kind of ebbed and flowed from year to year. We have some substantial, long-lasting neighborhood watches, but ultimately, a neighborhood collectively can make a decision that they're going to see something, say something. Wow, in some neighborhoods, if it's not your place, you just look the other way and don't worry about it, right? That's not the approach a community needs to have when it takes a proactive look on crime. It's really reinvigorating that neighborhood watch type format, looking at the lighting that you have. Motion lights do great things as far as discouraging people from what they want to do. We always work with Public Works quite a bit to make sure that streets have adequate lighting and put high-quality lighting up. That's another thing, if you see something in your neighborhood where you feel some more lighting would be beneficial, that's something to add in there, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Chair. Chief, vandalism. It looks like a big increase on our chart. It's up by 200. Are those mostly young people? And is there anything that we can help you do in that regard?
So, we look at vandalism, too, especially when it comes to gang graffiti or tagging, right? There's a lot of tagging things. And again, we'll see these numbers kind of fluctuate from year to year depending on who thinks tagging is a good thing. We had somebody who made a mark around town a couple of years back and really drove our numbers up. So, again, that's another thing, if you see something, call it in, and if you have graffiti, call it in so we can document it and get it taken care of, because it's kind of the, keeps building on itself sometimes. So, we've just got to make sure we take care of that, and as property owners, we work with them to try to make sure they get that covered up when it comes to that graffiti
Other questions? Counselor McCarras?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, chief. One comment, couple of questions. I get the opportunity to hear you speak in the community a little bit, and just wanted to reemphasize, you do a nice job every time you talk about some of our crime challenges aren't necessarily law enforcement issues, they're community issues. So, just wanted to encourage you on that and encourage you to make sure that all of our officers are also singing that same tune, that when we're talking in the community, we've got to be talking about our education system, all of that plays into this. So, thank you for the work you're doing on that in our community. Appreciate that message. I think the number-one thing I hear about in the community, just want to have you help us level-set a little bit, and the sheriff talked about it yesterday, is this issue of guns and officer-involved shootings. And so, I believe we've had eight officer-involved shootings since October of last year. Can you level-set for us a little bit? Is it, is it more, or does it just feel like more? Help us understand, how long did it take to get to eight officer-involved shootings before that time?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So, if you look back at the Chief Burns and Chief Barthel tenure, I believe we went back and looked, they had about four in their combined years, and now we're at eight since October. It's a, it's again, we're almost to the point where we're kind of looking at these numbers and saying, well, what exactly is happening here? It's a look at and see, rather than get caught up in the numbers, you have to look at each individual situation and how it unfolded, and look at some root causes. For example, last night's incident is very different than some of the other incidents we've seen and how we arrived to that point, but they all have usual themes that we see with issues that society's facing and how we remedy that. I think one thing we could really say is, we have desensitized a generation to violence to a certain degree through a lot of different ways, and in many ways, how we look at law and order and how we look at authority has maybe swung back and forth a little bit, and sometimes, like I said, when I started as a cop, there would seem to be a line that you didn't really want to cross when it came to carrying a firearm or using a firearm. Well, that line's different now. I think for many in the criminal element, there is just a more cavalier attitude towards using a gun, towards having a gun, and more possibility that that's an option that they want to use. And again, this comes back to exactly what you said, Counselor McCarras, it's a little too late when the trigger's pulled. We need to put a ton of effort into prevention, mentorship, really working with young people to call out peer-to-peer the gun violence issue and work with each other, because again, I think for years, we kind of looked, said, okay, well, this isn't really something that's going to affect us. Well, it's affecting us now, and we've seen more guns than ever, and I think that's where we really need to double down, especially with young people, and deliver that message as a broad community, and I think that's one step we can take. But it's, again, very alarming, because it's a dangerous environment now to be in law enforcement more than ever. And again, we're very fortunate in these circumstances that none of our officers were hurt or killed, but again, we need to be wary and really make sure that we're giving them the best training and the best chance they can, and to make sure that the criminal justice system is holding people accountable who need to be held accountable for their actions.
Thank you. One final question. I might not be able to answer it today, but I believe it's something all of us would be interested in. Do you have any ordinance changes or any programs that you would like to see the council specifically support that would either help your officers or help on the prevention front? So, we'd appreciate hearing that at some point.
We look closely with legal, and I try to stay out of making ordinances or laws. Again, it's one of the beautiful parts about being a police chief is, we work with the legislative bodies and the government bodies that are there to work laws, but I will say this, the council has always been, since before my tenure and now, very supportive of what we are asking and what we are talking about, as evidenced with some of the other initiatives you've just pushed forward, and we're looking for ways to engage and interact and really try to find different inventive ways to share this. Again, we will do our part, but we want to look at the system as a whole and how we can support that system.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, chief, for being here this afternoon and helping us out a little bit to understand what's going on in the community. I think the entire time I've been on the council and probably before that, we've, Chief Burns spent a lot of time talking about presumptive parole and some of the things that, the damage that's caused, and I missed that message for a number of years, and I'm starting to see what he was trying to promote, what we've, I think it's been on our legislative agenda just about every year, and it usually turns into one of the hotter topics that we end up discussing on how that works. But it, because you stay out of policymaking and some of the ordinance stuff, talk a little bit about what needs to change in your, from your vantage point.
And I'll be relatively candid about that. Presumptive probation, the parole system and where we're looking at, it's, and Sheriff Milstead commented on this yesterday, too, quite a bit. We just have to make sure that we understand that with everything we pass, whether it's SB 70 or what it's there, there's some unintended consequences that come along with it. I think we never have everything entirely figured out. Everything is a work in process, and legislatively, we need to look back and we need to say, okay, well, what are some tweaks? What are some alterations we can make? Because there is a certain thing to be said about, okay, sometimes when people get in trouble and there's consequences, that deviates them from their path, right? They maybe make some better choices. For other people, they just get more emboldened in their criminal nature and their attitude. So, one thing I'd like to just kind of point out is, like, we really have to look at if we're diverting people or if we're doing a different, because the answer isn't throwing everybody in jail. Sometimes throwing everybody in jail or prison just produces better criminals when they get out. So, if we're not investing time, money, and energy into making sure that people are really rehabilitated or have the chance to be successful when they get out, that's something we want to advocate for, because really, I think sometimes people think law enforcement is really looking to just arrest as many people as possible, and somehow, that's job security for us. No, we have plenty of job security. We would like to see people make great choices, do great things with their life, and not be involved, at least in a way where we have to arrest people. We're looking for less work, just like everybody else. I sometimes say, most people, when they go to work, they'd like to get the pay the same and not do as much work. Well, cops aren't that unique, right? Like, I'm not saying we don't want to work, but I'm saying the overload of work that we're seeing, we want people to make good choices, and how can we support that system? Because again, if we don't rehabilitate people and turn them back into public, what results are we really expecting than what we've already received? So, there has to be an investment, and that's not always a popular initiative to invest money into that system, but I think it's something that if you don't, you're going to pay more on the back end of it.
Agreed. If I could, one more. I said this before, I took a lot of heat for it, but I'm going to say it again, because it's what I do, because I'm not that smart, so if I can say the same thing over and over again, but if the messaging isn't working, we need different messaging. But the bottom line is, if someone leaves a weapon unsecured in their car and it's stolen and used in another crime, you're a criminal, you're not a victim. And you can talk about Second Amendment rights all you want, but if you continue to make the problem worse, you have basic responsibilities when you own a firearm. And securing that firearm, if someone busts out your window and takes a weapon from under your front seat or from your trunk or busts into your car, now you're a victim. But when you leave it unsecured, you're the problem. You're as much of the problem as the person who commits the crime with the gun. And until we get that message to the community, I don't know how, if you can't remember that you have a weapon under your front seat, you're probably not qualified to have that weapon. You know, at some point, when we're seeing dozens of these in a weekend, and it continues on for years, and the weapons that I'm assuming you're seeing at these crimes have been stolen, it was part of your beginning message that, you know, these weapons aren't, they're not buying them at a gun shop, they're stealing them either out of someone's car or someone from primarily unsecured locations. So, again, if you're not securing your weapon and you can't be a responsible owner, you're the problem.
And here's what, just I would like people to think about. It's the same thing that we think about when our property crimes detectives get a case assigned to them, or when our supervisors approve that report when it comes through. When we read missing was a unsecured 9mm or an AR-15 or something like that, the first thing that goes through the cop's head is, where am I going to see that again? And am I going to see that pointed at me, or am I going to see that in the crime or how it's going to be committed? It's a sinking feeling when you read that that's taken place from our position, because we know the reality of where these guns resurface. And again, that's something maybe if the community wants to get not clashed up in a Second Amendment argument, we can have that for another day or different things. I just want you to think about that basic level, about gun security and where that gun's going to end up, and just take that responsible step. Because again, it's not my job to be political about this. It's my job to be pragmatic about it. And I tell you, we don't need any more guns circulating. When I go out and talk to public groups, they ask me about ghost guns all the time. I go, I don't care about ghost guns, although we have seen a couple. But our problem is unsecured guns and the rest of the guns that are rolling around in the hands of criminals who are willing to use them at a rate like never before.
Thank you.
Other questions, counsel? I just have one. Could you talk to me a little bit about how like a Ring camera or a security camera can be used to locate criminals?
That's great. That's a good follow-up on your question, too. When cameras first came out, they were super expensive. It would cost you a lot of money to put a decent system. Technology has become a lot of great advancements. And again, I know in speaking with some of our Liberian community, they were calling for legislatively for cameras to be put in every apartment complex. Now, as a chief, I can't support legislation, but I'm like, that's a pretty good idea. Like, the more cameras we have circulating and the more that we just kind of point them out towards the street or have a little vantage point where we can get some street footage on it, it's beneficial. And again, when we work through very difficult cases, we comb neighborhoods looking for evidence. And we've solved very significant cases with cameras. And so for people, if they have these cameras and they want to point them in a direction that benefits not only their house but also the neighborhood, I think that's a smart idea. And if you see something or something happens in your neighborhood, check your camera footage quick. Because I know sometimes they only have like a seven-day shelf life. If you have something, call, have us take a look at it. It may seem inconsequential, but sometimes it's very important when we look at these major cases.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great presentation. We'll be, I'm sure we'll have discussions throughout the year.
Yep. And thanks, counsel, for your continued support and your focus on our department and the efforts we're trying to make community-wide. Appreciate it greatly.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next presentation, the downtown parking ramp update. Erica Beck, please.
Good afternoon, counsel. Thanks for having me. Now, this is a tough pivot, going from Chief Toome to me. So thank you so much for, for having me today. I have just a couple of slides to go through with you in reference to an update on the downtown parking ramp and next steps with that project. Dustin's going to help me here because I just pushed the wrong button, I think. My apologies. Just to take you back a little bit, we started this process, talking about this process in July of this year. And ultimately, we've had a couple of meetings. This will be our third meeting at an informational discussion to talk about this and ultimately where we're going. We have another one scheduled in October, just as a reminder. We've had multiple discussions with the parking board thus far. We've had some discussions with our partners in the industry, so the Governor's Office of Economic Development, Development Foundation, DTSF, Planning Commission, et cetera, along with a number of industry conversations that we've had. Informational discussions ultimately that we've had with folks within the development industry, the real estate industry, hoteliers, and et cetera, to talk about this opportunity and essentially gather questions from them that they have for us and that we'll review just a few slides from now. And then ultimately, we're, we're working hard to develop and make sure that we have all the information that the industry needs in order to move forward with potentially responses on what could be a future project at this site. So sorry. Here we go. Okay, so today's meeting, we're going to review, real briefly, high-level overview of the downtown market analysis. As you are aware, the 2035 downtown plan is underway. And Dustin Powers and Jeff Eckhoff's teams have been working hard, including moving forward with the downtown market analysis. We've, we have the executive summary back from that, and I've made it even more executive of a summary here for you today. But we're going to comment just on a few of those items within that study. And then we're also going to talk about and review the comments and questions that we heard, our city staff heard from the industry informational discussions that we had. And then I hope to have some discussion with all of you in regards to your development expectations for this site, in addition to what your thoughts are on incentive requests that we might receive from industry professionals. And then lastly, what your thoughts are in regards to a future sale of this entirety of the property. And I'll get into that a little bit further in terms of why that's important coming up here. Okay, so to dive in, just a few slides on the downtown market analysis, the executive summary, the map in front of you. Each of those highlighted parcels are parcels that have either been developed or are in the process of being developed since the 2025 downtown plan was completed. And what was most, I think, important in terms of the comments that the market study group shared with the planning team is that we've seen great growth, fantastic growth, fantastic momentum. And a lot of the areas that were called out in the 2025 downtown plan in terms of, you know, opportunities for development are either developed or are in the process of being developed. And so just a really great comment, I think, from them. And ultimately, this map is a good visual aid for all of us in understanding what's happening downtown. Also, within the executive summary, there was a map that showcases opportunities to further explore. And those are highlighted within blue in that map on the screen. The second bullet point is what I'll review specifically with you here today, and that references the Mall Avenue Parking Ramp property. That's how they've labeled this. And so essentially, what they're saying is that you have a great site. It's just over an acre in size, and it has the potential for multiple land use types moving forward. The facility that's on the site today, of course, the ramp, has, was built with structural capacity for multi-story construction above the ramp. So the key will be to find the right user moving forward, which I think we already knew, but it's nice to have someone else tell us the same thing. In addition to that, what's also really helpful and what we will essentially share with the industry folks that we've been meeting with are these general market statements that the consultant also shared with us based upon their analysis of our market here in Sioux Falls and then specifically downtown. I took three very, you know, summarized sections from each of their, their comments on residential office and retail growth moving forward. And ultimately, what they're suggesting is that we have room for growth moving forward. So in 2035, as an example, based upon a 2.3% annual city growth, they're suggesting that we will see an absorption rate of an additional 100 to 160 residential units per year in downtown, which I think is a good thing. And ultimately, it's in line with what we saw over the last several years as well. And ultimately, the market study analysis that was done for the 2025 downtown plan. In addition, you'll see in the second bullet point, specific to office, they're also suggesting that there's room for additional office growth downtown, which is a good thing moving forward. And there's a lot of additional comment that I would just share with all of you that's in this executive summary and that's in the, ultimately, the larger market analysis as well that you'll be able to review in a lot more detail than what I'm providing you here today. And then lastly, retail, we've seen a lot of retail growth within downtown over the last several years, but they're suggesting that there's room for more growth in the retail market within downtown as it relates to the 2035 downtown plan. And again, the reason that this was important to highlight to you today and ultimately why we'll be sharing it, why we will be sharing it with the industry is that we want to give them confidence that there's still room to grow in the Sioux Falls market and specifically within downtown. All right, so I'm going to jump into the industry informational discussions that we had. We had specifically three discussions with industry folks. We had 36 people representing 24 different businesses participate in those conversations, so I thought we had a great turnout. Ultimately, that then has translated into tours that we're doing for a number of those folks, including additional team members that they have that they're bringing to those tours. But common questions and discussion themes from attendees. I've separated these, these comments or these questions that we received into three different sections. Site and structure-related, process-related, and deal-level, deal-level related. Not going to go through all of them for you here today, but I just wanted to give you a sense as to the types of questions that we were asked in those discussions. We made it very clear that our intent during those discussions was not to try to provide all of the answers to these questions, but ultimately make sure that we can, at the time that this announcement occurs, that we're entering this phase of solicitation of interest, that we will have as much information as we can to provide them with the confidence that they need to move forward. There are a couple that I do want to point out, though, specifically. First and foremost, I think in all three sessions, we were asked if the site was located within an opportunity zone, and it is. So in the handouts that you have in front of you, that's actually noted on the handout, and that will be provided to all interested parties moving forward so that they understand that this actually is indeed located within an opportunity zone. I'm going to skip down to process because a lot of the site and structure questions, you're probably not as interested in. If you do have questions on those, I'm happy to answer any of them. Process, though, related, there's a couple of things here that I just want to comment on, and it's specifically why I'm asking all of you for your input on those three questions later on on the agenda. The first question, and I summarized this, but we were asked this question both in one of our open discussion formats with the industry. And then we were pulled aside and asked this question again by a developer who has interest in this project as well. But is there a chance that the process or the project could be hindered by political decisions? And I share that because this site, this project, as you know, has a lot of baggage, right? Has a lot of history that comes with it. And so the importance of the process that we're following today is that we are giving confidence to the industry on ultimately what we, as a collective group, agree to be the expectations moving forward. And so that's why it's important for all of us, having this conversation, to answer questions like, what are the council's expectations for site development moving forward? What kinds of uses would you like to see here? In terms of incentives, are you open to considering those for the right project? Or is that just a deal breaker for all of you? I expect wholeheartedly that a number of the folks that attended these informational discussions with us are watching today and will be watching on October 11th because they want to hear from all of you, your thoughts on how you'd like to see this move forward. And so I reference this question because it's top of mind for people as we go through this process. In addition to that, you'll note these kind of themes of, you know, how flexible can you be in terms of your, the information that you require through your responses. A number of them have not been through a negotiated sale process before, especially the folks from out of town. And so Jeff and Dustin, in those meetings, walked through that process with them to talk a little bit about that and ultimately help shape their thoughts in terms of the flexibility that we provide through that negotiated sale process is much different than it would be through a request for proposals, as an example. Under the deal-level discussion, I'll point out a couple of those questions as well. Specifically, will the city consider proposals that include acquiring the ramp and the site? So again, that question that I had posed to you at the, at the beginning of this that we need to discuss, will the council consider that for the right project moving forward, or is that just a deal breaker? We need to be clear and upfront by the time that we make this announcement so that the folks that are interested in this have the confidence to move forward in putting the materials together that we're going to require of them. Second bullet point there are incentives available through either the city, the Development Foundation, or the Governor's Office of Economic Development. In addition to that, there are some specific questions regarding, you know, the type of deal structure that could potentially be on the table. Would the city consider maintenance cost shares for a project moving forward? And our response, just as an example of that, was, of course, we will, especially if it's a situation or a project in which the city maintains ownership of the ramp and essentially there is a private development being built on top of it, either through condo air rights or leased air rights. And so I'm not going to get into a lot of detail further on those questions unless you have questions on that. But I would love to jump into a conversation while we still have time about those three points that I noted. So specifically, maybe starting with site development expectations and hearing from all of you if you do have expectations on, on the development of this site and ultimately how that looks at the end of this project when we have a ribbon cutting, which we all want to happen. So I'm hoping that you've heard from maybe some of your constituents or stakeholders within the downtown, their thoughts on this, and you'd be willing to share those at this time.
Let's jump right in there. Counsel Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for site development, here are kind of some of my thoughts in general. And this is what I thought, you know, back in the day when there used to be that drama around this. Now that we're in a focused process, I think we can really focus on our process and look forward because Sioux Falls and South Dakota in general is open for business. And I think that that, this ramp, being the most developable site in Sioux Falls, should also be noted for the process. And is this going to get political? No, it's not going to get political because we're going to have a good process that's open and transparent, and this is a part of that. So I think that in general, we should have a developer that knows how to build up, not necessarily just a three-story, you know, hotel on the plains of South Dakota, but someone that actually has the ability to build up on this. Whether it be a hotel, a mixed-use hotel with office and retail down below, whether it be a corporate headquarters of some big tech firm, we're kind of big on that in Sioux Falls right now. So I think that that could be, you know, something that we could go out and incent in the communities that are surrounding us. I think some of the other things that I, that we all talk about, and you heard it during the budget talks, is we expect 10th Street to become, you know, a walkable area. It's kind of a, you know, an area around downtown that isn't walked on all that much. It connects, you know, people to the dog park just to the east of that. So I think that that would be an expectation of most of the people that I've talked to. But again, this is the most developable land, structure, excuse me, in all of South Dakota at this time. And what a better place to do it. So, you know, let's go.
Thank you.
Other comments, Counsel Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Erica, for the presentation. Just some reflections on having the privilege to sit in on these meetings and these tours so far. I've been really impressed with, you know, the folks that have attended everything are very interested, obviously. But they've got very thoughtful questions. They're very excited. I do think that they're coming at it with an idea that there's just so much opportunity here. And I think, you know, the administration and the people in these meetings and that, Erica's done a really good job, too, of really asking questions of these industry leaders, development leaders, and really asking them, what do you think? What ideas do you have? What concerns do you have? And there've been very good discussions. As I've said a few times in these meetings, I cannot speak for the council. I can only say that I'm going through this process, obviously want the highest and best use for this project. I personally am going to keep as open-minded as possible and not rule anything out. I don't think we want to deter any kind of ideas or say to somebody, we're just not going to do that or think about that. I don't, I don't think that's going to do any good. And I said, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but knowing the rest of you like I think I do, I said, I think you can count on a pretty open minds all the way around here as well. So yeah, we do want to do what we can to give confidence in the industry, I think, as Erica said. And I, it's not anything that I have to work real hard to sell on because I do have every confidence that this project's going to be fantastic. So again, I appreciate how often Erica's been in front of us, how open they've been through these meetings, how many meetings and tours there have been, because there have been a lot. So this has been a very open process. And again, hearing from these folks and leaders out there and getting their ideas and input, I think we've got a lot to look forward to here. Thank you.
Other comments this time? Counsel McCaras?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is fabulous. Thanks for the open communication and opportunities. At least when I look at this and I think what I hear going on in the community, I can't speak enough about residential and people living downtown, they eat, live downtown, they eat downtown, they shop downtown. That would be a high priority for me. It'd be, I know that we need to support housing at all levels. And so I think we need to consider at a very high priority, what can we do to get more people living downtown? I think it has economic impact for the long term. For me personally, I would struggle incentivizing anything outside of housing-type thing unless there's part of a bigger package. I think we need to keep a close eye on what's going on at the Event Center, Arena area, East Bank. All of that ties together in regards to hotel space, and I'm not in those conversations. You're already, you're well aware of what's going on all there. I just think that what's going on at the Event Center, we got to keep a close eye on regards to what do we need for more hotels out there as we received the experience Sioux Falls numbers earlier this year about recruiting pheasants forever, places like that. And so I think for me personally, using public funds, I'm interested in incentivizing to get those types of places here. But I struggle using public funds to incentivize a project like this unless it was residential meeting in need that was getting living, working, eating, playing downtown, et cetera. But overall, really excited and think the work that's been done to this point's been really good.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Counsel Neitzer?
So a few thoughts. Whatever it is, and I think it should be largely market-driven. I don't, I'm not going to say it should be office or it should be commercial or, or, you know, what it should be. I think the market will dictate that. It's got to work. In anything downtown, you would, you would think it may be some sort of a mix, but I think that's very much driven by the market. So it could be a corporate headquarters with a little retail component, or it could be hotels. So I would be very open-minded to what exactly it is. I'd like to see something that's obviously I'd like to see something that's obviously a reasonable size, given the ramp that's there. I'm not going to peg a specific minimum amount of floors or anything like that, but I think common sense would dictate that. And then I think it's going to be really important to activate the front. So that's the one place where I would say it's going to be, just as a principle of downtown and walkability, you're going to want something that's activated. So that's going to be a great place where you would think you would see things like retail shops, like coffee shops and things like that. That's just a basic principle. What's going vertical is much more open-minded. And would I be willing to potentially split the two in terms of the front and the top? I think so, but I would like to see, you know, make sure that both are getting done and it's not the top and the front is sitting there, but, you know, how that deal is worked out. So that's the general thought process I have on just what development I would expect. My expectation is it's going to be largely market-driven.
Thank you.
Other comments? Well, I'll just make a few and then I'll let you continue. What are your bullet points on there? What level of financing detail would the city require? Counselor Neitzer and I discussed this almost four years ago. What I would suggest is somehow if we need to get to the level where we're comfortable with the financing package and they're uncomfortable with releasing it to a public entity like the city, maybe we could reach out to a private firm to verify the financials of the people we're dealing with. It's always been a concern of mine, sometime when you go low bid, I mean, if Kurtz Oil Company has a low bid and I show up with a sixty-seven Dodge pickup and three fifty-five gallon barrels, but I was low bid, I don't know if that's the best thing for us to do. So if we can't do that internally, let's look at getting some expertise from outside to verify those financials. That would be, and as far as the rest of it, we've had a lot of conversations, think you know where I'm at, the timetable.
I appreciate that comment regarding financing. We talked a little bit about this in that conversation specifically, if I remember correctly, with respect to negotiated sale process versus RFP. In an RFP, your response is packaged. The expectation is that you're providing a lot more information upfront than you would be through the negotiated sale process. So just as an example, that's one of the things that we've utilized to make this process more realistic as far as development goes and why we've seen some success in negotiating with Jeff Schirshlick, as an example, on Chirapatu, and ultimately our current negotiation that's going on on Parcel C of the Rail Yard District, is because people come forward with these great ideas, but then they need to actually go out and sell those to prospective tenants, office users, et cetera, before they can get that financing package developed. And so ultimately, we did talk a lot about that because there were some folks who had an expectation or an assumption that we were going to be requesting a lot more information upfront, and we will through the process, but the process looks different. So just wanted to point that out. I like the idea of a third party. We've used third parties in the past before in different scenarios, including with tax increment financing requests, and so I think that's something that we can look at again, too.
Okay. Thank you. More comments? Counselor Neitzer?
Yeah, I mean, since you hit the financing part, I guess, because it's not clear where they all necessarily fit, but I think, you know, confidence to the industry is important because obviously nobody wants to move forward with a project unless they have some clarity that it's not going to be a really tough political thing. But I think it just needs to be said and it just needs to be clear, just respectfully, that this is a two-way street. I mean, we obviously went through a very tough episode, and so I think, you know, we owe it to ourselves and obviously, most notably to the citizens, that we really know that the person we're working with, the entity, has the financial wherewithal and the character to pull this off. So that's just something that, you know, that's just something that we need to be really confident on so that we're both in lockstep and we both know that we can trust each other, because this isn't, this is something where we're building on top of an asset of ours. It's not just greenfield. So that's just going to be really important.
Appreciate that comment, Counselor. With respect to that, there was one last question we haven't addressed necessarily, and I want to make sure that we get that out there because this was asked multiple times. Does the council have strong feelings either way about entertaining the sale of the entirety of the site in this process?
Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Council Chair. From conversations that I've had with individuals in Sioux Falls, I think that most people would think that there could be, it could go both ways. You could sell it or you could, you know, maintain the property and let someone, you know, have leasehold improvements on top of that. And what that allows the administration and then eventually us, the ability to approve the best deal and the best project. And it might, I don't think it's cut and dry from my perspective on if we should get rid of it or shouldn't get rid of it, but we should entertain all options from my perspective and then be able to, you know, then be able to move forward and act on those as they come forward through planning and development. And they talked about incentives, so I'll just, you know, put my two cents in on that as well. If you look at incentives, I think that planning and development in the tenure of your administration has brought to us palatable situations that we've been approved, that we approve of. I think that you guys should work with every lever that you have, and we'll tell you if we think you're hitting outside of the fence or, you know, hitting fall balls, and then we'll approve it at that point. So I think ultimate flexibility will allow us as a seller of this property or a leasehold mortgager of the property, we will then have the best ability to get the best deal for, like Counselor Neitzer said, the citizens of Sioux Falls, which we're going to get this thing done, so.
Counselor Neitzer.
Yeah, I don't want to close the door on either option. I think, you know, as we look at it, you know, it's not atypical in other communities to have a number of privately-owned parking ramps and even have public access to it in some way. That's done very frequently. You know, in some ways, you could argue that there could be a cleanliness to it if it was, you know, if it's purchased and then it's under just one private control. I mean, so I'm not, again, I'm not, as with Counselor Jensen, I'm not going to say one or the other, but obviously, we would just have to work through, and I don't think it's impossible, is, okay, we have a bond, so we have to figure out, how does that work? And when the bonds are callable, and if we escrow the money and we pay it off, how that all, I mean, those are details. We'd have to work through all of that and make sure that we can take care of that. And then, of course, the whole reason we built the parking ramp was that we needed more capacity in the parking division. Now, that being said, the parking is accumulative of private and public parking, so just because it goes private doesn't necessarily mean that you lose the parking. But we could, but we would just have to talk through with the parking division, what do we need to do? Maybe it requires some sort of a leaseback or some sort of right that we get so many spots in the ramp for the next fifty years or whatever it may be. So short story, I wouldn't close the door on it.
I'll just make a quick comment on that. I don't know if there's anybody out there ready to Venmo us seventy-five million dollars for our parking ramp, but I think we should open that up. For me, to go along with what Counselor Neitzer says, it all depends on who controls the parking and how that looks. I believe what Counselor Jensen said, let's keep all options on the table to see what would happen.
Very good. Appreciate that.
All right.
Okay. One more slide. Sorry, one more. Very quickly, so I mentioned earlier that we're wrapping up site and structure tours. We have an additional site and structure tour yet to give. And then our next step will be October eleventh, Council Informational again, and at that meeting, our intention is to talk about the announcement timeline, process that we're going to go through, the team of people that will be put together to actually lead that process, because this is kind of a due diligence team, right, that we're working in right now. So we'll go through all of that with you at the October eleventh meeting, given the comments, the questions that we've received from the industry, all of your feedback. So if there's additional feedback that comes in after this, please send it to me. We'll get all of that compiled and we'll work through that together on October eleventh. And then we're going to target an announcement in early November, if not late October. Any questions, comments?
Further questions, comments? Well, thank you very much for your presentation, council members and general public. If you're watching, you can reach out to Eric Aback or the Planning and Development people, Jeff Eckoff, or our own inside guy on this, Marshall Selberg, who's been attending a lot, a lot of meetings and keeping the council updated on it. So I really, really appreciate that. Now, at this time, we'll move into public comment. Speakers are allowed up to five minutes on each of the topics that we might have spoke about at today's meeting.
Sierra, beside Sioux Falls. I'm going to be careful in what I say here. You know, we have cameras in neighborhoods and people are active in neighborhoods with cameras. So when crimes are being committed and I go back and people's calling me and saying, Sierra, well, my camera's not catching it very clear or blase, blase. So I'm looking in these neighborhoods. And we got some, I've been working with a council member to put up lighting in neighborhoods. When I put up a pole with lighting in that neighborhood and then that camera on the ring shows up brightly, very good. I think we need to look at the lighting situation, and I think we need to find a way to trim those trees down because the trees are overcovering the lights and making it dark for crime in neighborhoods. I'm going to say this carefully. There is some homicides that has been investigated. One particular homicide that is being investigated, if those criminals think that they're getting away with it, they're not. These homicides that are being investigated, on two of those homicides, I can say a hundred percent that that was drug-related. On the other hand, one of those homicides that happened in a neighborhood, I'm going to tell you that a lot of people came forward and provided camera footage and evidence and blase, blase. What comes down to the neighborhoods on these homicides is the lighting situation for the cameras on people's houses to come to the light so the police department could better see what they're looking at. And I can't get into it, I'm going to show y'all a footage camera in private, but putting up lighting and making sure that the streetlights are visible makes it very clearly when evidence is provided to the police that they can clearly see the individual, individuals and the car and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Not saying that if the criminals are listening to what I'm saying to do crimes in dark areas because you're going to get caught. There's one homicide that they're close to catching. After that homicide is done with, then I'll talk about that one. But we need to do something about those streetlights. There are neighbor, there are trees that are taking over those lightings and making it dark areas right there. And I'm going to tell you one of them. I want you to go on Duluth Avenue, and I want you to go all the way down Duluth Avenue to Twenty-second and Duluth and look, and you can show me, tell me that those trees need to be trimmed down because those trees are overtaking the lighting and it's making it very dark. So when people have video cameras, you can't get much of it on that. Chief Toomey is a wonderful person, and I always told you all that, he was better than Chief Burns. I'm working with legislation to come up with something with presumption probation, so some state attorneys are coming up with some legislation in Pierre to work with presumption probation. The homicides that are happening here, we need to tighten up on homicides here, and I told legislation that, because these criminals know how to commit a homicide to spare their life without the death penalty here. So, you know, people might not agree with me, but I think that we need to go like Texas and get tougher on death penalties here, on that nature here. I'm all about incarceration because about seventy percent of my people in my neighborhood are parolees and felons, and I'm not going to, I don't have time for them. I'm not tired of being someone's psychiatrist or sex therapist or, you're going to jail. You're going to the prison, and the prison will take care of you, and then you'll get the help that you need. But I'm going to tell you something, there's eleven felons, aggressive felons, that I'm not going to mention because they have open cases in my neighborhood that should be locked up for life in prison without parole. One person that I'm dealing with has seventeen felonies in a ten-year time. Do you think that he should be out on the streets? Absolutely not. So when y'all talk about incarceration, you come and talk to me and you come and pedigree where all of the felons land up when they come in prison, because pedigree is a prison without the prison walls.
Thank you. Any other public input at this time? Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of consulting with legal counsel or reviewing communications from legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters pursuant to SDCL 125-23.
Is there a second?
Say it.
Thank you. Can we roll call vote, please?
Uh, let's see. Council, pardon me. Council members. Thank you, my apologies. Councilmember Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurris.
Yes.
Neitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion to move executive session passes. We'll adjourn this portion and move into executive session.